I'd like to call tonight's Wednesday, January 24th, school board meeting to order. Roll call by treasurer.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Here.
Mr. Bax?
Here.
Mr. Elick?
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Here.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the very public for which it stands, one nation under God, indelible with liberty and justice for all.
Since we have a sold-out crowd here tonight, the introductions, to my far right is Board Member Jim Bax, to my direct right is Board Member Greg Elick. I'm Kevin Brubaker, to my left is Vice President Annie Karstoffen, to her left is Board Member Mike Gebhardt, to his left is our Superintendent Dr. Jama and our Treasurer, Joy Klickinger. We have any board recognition tonight?
Mr. President, yes, we do. At this time, I'd like to call Amy Higgins up front, please, to do a presentation this evening.
Oh.
I actually had quite a speech worked out here and it was bad because there's nobody here. Well, you all matter, but...
Why, nobody here? Mr. Taylor's here.
Mr. Taylor is here.
Yes.
For our radio audience, it's a sold-out crowd.
That's right. Well, January is School Board Appreciation Month. I don't know if you remembered that, but it is a great opportunity for us to thank you for your dedication as school board members to the community of Elyria and specifically to the children. You, as board members, take on a tremendous responsibility of governing the school district, volunteering for committee work, attending meetings, addressing citizen concerns, appearing at events, making critical decisions for the good of students and residents. We appreciate everything that you do, and it's just too many things to list. As we set out on this journey to rebuild our school district and athletic facilities, I'm going to need an assistant, Dr. Jama can help me. We wanted to commemorate a special moment that we've had with you and that you were instrumental in creating.
Cake?
Oh, man, what did we get?
He's coming to dance and sing here?
Holy cow.
Wow.
So...
Wow, is that nice?
This is an aerial of the last home game of the season, and of course, you breaking ground.
Oh, my goodness, is that nice?
And I wanted to say thank you for everything.
Wow, thank you so much.
You keep it one week. It's week.
We truly appreciate the...
That is so cool.
...all of these events and you're...
I'm going to cry. That is so nice.
Leading the charge, so...
Wow.
Just put it in front there. You just put them right in front of you.
Yeah, those are real cool.
Those are nice.
Those are awesome.
Yes.
I need, we need to get like a black one, get all your signatures on it.
And we also are the official...
Will that increase the value?
The official acknowledgement from the Ohio School Board Association for your service.
Well, thank you.
For honor to present you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Very cool.
But these are actually, we intend to do more of these, just the aerial, as a fundraiser. So this is something that you'll be seeing more of, but we, you know, this is special for you guys.
Leaving their photo on there, I bet you may increase the value.
I know, I know.
That would decrease the value.
Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you, Amy, we appreciate that. Thanks.
Very, very, very.
Very impressive. Thank you. Any other recognition?
That's it, Mr. President?
All righty. I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of the discussion of employment of a public employee or official and to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes as authorized on the Ohio Revised Code, ORC Section 121.22, with possible action to follow. Can I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Gebhardt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bax. Any discussion? And Treasurer, roll, please.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye. Motion carried. Turn to the conference room?
Absolutely.
For the record, we will return back to our regular board meeting to amend the previous motion and second to go into executive session. Madam Treasurer?
Move to adjourn into executive session to consider confidential information related to negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting request for economic development assistance. The information being directly related to a request for economic development assistance under Ohio Revised Code 5709.62 and to the executive session being necessary to protect the interests of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project. Also added to that will be then executive session for the purpose of discussion of employment of a public employee or official.
The motion was made by Mr. Gebhardt. Do you concur with the amendment?
Would you read it one more time? No, I occur with it.
The second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Madam Treasurer, we call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Got everybody back. Need a motion to resume back into our board meeting?
So moved.
Move by Ms. Karstoffen, second by Mr. Elick. Any discussion? Madam Treasurer, call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye. Back in the session. Next item on our agenda is the visitors' comments. We have none this evening, so we'll move on to board member discussion items. Any board member discussion items?
Jim Bax and I went to the Hidden in Plain site at the high school last night. It was very informative. There was a police officer from, I think, Bath or Copley, and there was a dispatcher. Dispatcher from Copley or Bath, one or the other. But they talked about drugs and how kids can hide these and showed us a number of ways to do it, and it was just giving parents something to watch out for. And there was probably, I don't know, 50 people, but it was very informative and they did a nice job. Yeah. That was nice. That was a good, that was good to put that, put that out in front of people, make that available. It was very interesting, pretty inform, very informative.
Anything else? Just a reminder that February 3rd at 8:00 a.m., bright and early, will be our retreat executive session to, not executive session, but our treat with the cabinet. That'll start at 8:00 a.m., and I believe we're still doing the breakfast thing, so just as a reminder.
Would you use that for 6:00?
6:00 a.m.? We could.
I believe it's the full breakfast.
I don't want to be assassinated. Any other board member discussion items? Not, move on to the next item. A motion to approve the, board approves the Board of Education Record of Proceedings for the meeting of January 9, 2018, and January 10 of 2018 as detailed in enclosure F1. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Gebhardt.
A second.
Second by Mr. Bax. Any discussion? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye. Motion carried. Treasurer, action items. Chris Muncher?
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I am asking the board to accept the financial report for the month of December 2017, which includes all bank reconciliations, investment report, cash balance report, and the appropriation expense reports as detailed in enclosure number one. Also donations to acknowledge, express appreciation, and accept the donations and gifts as listed in the agenda. And that is what I have this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the items recommended by the Treasurer as presented?
So moved.
Move by Ms. Karstoffen?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gebhardt. Any discussion?
I have a question. In our, Madam Treasurer, in our, all of our dollars invested, we talked sometime last year potentially of the group that you use to advise you on that. Would it make sense for them to come in and discuss with the board kind of our investment portfolio?
Sure, they'd be happy to do that.
I just, there's some big dollars out there, and it'd be interesting to hear kind of their philosophy on this investment mix.
How about the first meeting in February? No, wait, that's a traveling one, isn't it?
Traveling one, yeah.
How about the next one that we have here?
Why don't you...
If it works for them.
Check that with our president, he'll get it in there.
Any other discussion? If not, Madam Treasurer, if you call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye. Motion carried. Treasurer, other?
Yes, I'm asking the board to approve the modified permanent appropriations as detailed in enclosure H1.
Entertain a motion to approve the items recommended by the Treasurer as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Gebhardt, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Karstoffen. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to just say a couple of words about it. I put some additional information at your places this evening. The first sheet shows you the difference between the current appropriations and then what we're moving them to and the increase and decrease. You'll notice that we're decreasing general fund appropriations. Initially, we started a little bit high, and I think that we can get by with less appropriations, so I backed those down. The next largest change is in special revenue funds. Special revenue funds are dollars that come in and we have to spend them in a certain way, like grants. And at the time that we did this, I wasn't sure what our grant dollars would be. Now that I have a better eye on that, we can increase that by a little over $3 million, and those are our big, those are the two big chunks. If you want some comparison to how it lines up with last year's appropriations, that's on the second sheet. This is, I don't want to say it's routine, but you will get and do get updates on the appropriations. You'll get them more frequently between now and June
Any questions or concerns from the board? Seeing done, we do have a motion and a second. Madam Treasurer, will you call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye. Motion carried. Item I, Treasury Report?
I do not have anything this evening.
Anything from OFCC, OSFC, Sports Complex?
Not too much.
Nothing? Dr. Jama, Superintendent Action Items?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make the following recommendations under Superintendent Actions for the board's consideration this evening. Item one, to approve the overnight field trip for Elyria Middle School 7th and 8th grade robotics students to Columbus, Ohio on March 2nd and 3rd, 2018, as detailed in enclosure K1. Item number two, to approve the overnight field trip for Elyria High School 9th through 12th grade robotic students to Columbus, Ohio on March 9th and 10th, 2018, as detailed in enclosure K2. Item number three, to approve the payment of stipends as listed below. $100 per session, not to exceed two sessions, to the following staff members for providing professional development beyond the workday. This stipend will be supported by the Title I and Title II-A grants. Item number four, to approve the payments of stipends as listed below. $11.72 per hour, not to exceed four hours for the following attendance for training in the developmental approaches to working with preschool students. This will be supported by the general fund. Item number five, to approve the OSBA services agreement for the purpose of providing the policy web update service for 2018. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations under Superintendent Actions.
Thank you, Dr. Jama. Do I have a motion to approve the items recommended by the Superintendent as presented?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Elick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Karstoffen. Any discussion or questions? Seeing's done, Madam Treasurer, we call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye. Motion carried. Dr. Jama, personal action items?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, thank you. I would like to make the following recommendations under personal actions as recommended by the Superintendent, again, for the board's consideration this evening. Item number one, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff as detailed below. And you can see we're adding additional substitute teachers on our rolls, and I believe we're, what, close to 80 now?
78.
78, okay, which is a great number. Again, it helps us with our attendance, any attendance issues that we have with teachers being out. That was asked, too, by Mr. Brubaker, and I thought it was a great question when him and I were talking. His question was if you don't have enough substitutes to man any of the absences that are out on any given day, how are those handled? And it depending on the building and it depends on the grade level. At the high school and middle school levels, you'll have teachers who have a planning period just about every day or periodically. The teachers who have planning periods during their period will cover a class or classes for the day and then get a supplemental contract. At the elementary, it's a little bit different, and it's, it's difficult. What would happen is if you have three 3rd grade, 3rd grade classrooms at, let's just say Oakwood, for example, and if a 3rd grade teacher is out, for the most part, if you don't have a sub, those kids will get split between the other classes, so that's why...
Does that happen very often?
It does happen periodically, yeah, absolutely.
Fortunately, the last few years it has.
And my understanding is, is some of those substitute teachers are also substitutes in other districts, so they may have been called prior to us calling them.
That is correct. Item number two, to approve the following Ohio High School Athletic Association tournament workers as detailed below. Item number three, to approve the unpaid leave of absence for the certified staff member as detailed below. Item number four, to approve the resignation of the following classified staff member as detailed below. Item number five, to approve the appointment of the classified staff members as detailed below. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations under personnel actions as recommended by the Superintendent.
Thank you. Dr. Jama, do I have a motion to approve the personnel items as recommended by the Superintendent as presented?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Bax. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Elick. Any discussion? Madam Treasurer, we call the roll?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye. Motion carried. Dr. Jama, Superintendent Report?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things I'd like to share with the board this evening. Last night, I had the opportunity, a wonderful opportunity, to address residents of the South Side of Elyria. South Side State of the City address was held at the West Lane Village, and it was a wonderful opportunity to share what we're doing in the Elyria City Schools. And I was very happy to see, and I was happy for Marcus, there was, I would say, 250 to 300, Mr. Wall, is that?
Please ask a quick break.
The room, the, what's it, the Cascade Room was absolutely packed at the conference center last night. So a great evening, but again, it gave me an opportunity to talk about the construction, an opportunity to talk about our hiring practices, opportunity to talk about transportation and busing with our students, and just the great things that are taking place within the Elyria City School District. Marcus gave a wonderful presentation and a speech with reference to the South Side and the many things that are going on throughout the community. So it was a great evening, and again, just a wonderful opportunity to share what's taken place within our school system. I'd like to read, and I don't know if everybody had an opportunity to see it, I wish there were more people here tonight, but I would like to read an editorial that was in the paper this week, and I think it is something that completely encapsulates what we're all about in the Elyria City School System and the great things taking place in our district each and every single day. The title was "Elyria Schools Deserve Praise for Good Habits." I am writing this to commend those in the Elyria Schools who have sought and won new federal school improvement grants aimed at developing programs that encourage good attendance, parent volunteering, and community partnerships. Any and all efforts that are aimed at eradicating behaviors to educational needs are applauded, supported, and valued. I have been an educator for more than 30 years in both public and private school systems, other than Elyria. I've always invited parents and grandparents to participate with my students in my classrooms. Certainly, it was helpful to me as a teacher, but the real value was in the engagement between those volunteers and the students. Relationships were formed, more adults could serve as role models, countless more opportunities existed for children to be encouraged and seem valuable. It is a win-win at utmost. The nuclear family nowadays doesn't play the role it once did. Many of our, many of us are learning how to raise kids as we go. Any opportunities to share insight and tools that are effective in educating parents and students should be seen as a great advantage of families of Windsor and at Franklin to get and share. To be sure, the Elyria Schools are on the cutting edge and clearly proactive in seeking and winning such an impressive grant. As a parent and as a resident of Elyria, I am thrilled to get to see this grant benefiting our community, our families, our schools, and most importantly, our students. Well done, Elyria. Again, it's just, it's nice when you see these positive editorials in the paper. I know you hear me talk about it all the time and the great things that are taking place in our schools, you hear our staff members talk about it, but again, it's...
So who's that from?
I'm sorry, Joy Bond, who is a resident of Elyria. She's a former school, former school teacher in districts outside of Elyria. And do you know where she was?
She was at Open Door, and she was volunteering this past year at Franklin, Style of Blue, wrote and wanted to volunteer. It's in reference to the new parent engagement grants that we just were awarded, and we already have them up and running. It's exciting, some of the things they're already doing.
Absolutely. But I thought it was important to share.
Very nice, very nice.
Also, tonight, following the board meeting, there is a wrestling tournament taking place at the Elyria High School. It's the state duels. It's the first round of wrestling that's taking place. So as soon as the meeting's over, you're all invited to head over to Elyria High School and watch wrestling if you would like. And then finally, I'm going to ask Amy to please come up. Recently, there has been some miscommunication or some misinformation out on social media, and I would like to have you hear firsthand from Amy on what's actually occurring, and there may be an article in the paper tomorrow, but just so we're on the same page.
Hello, again.
Hello, again.
I received a call yesterday from Lisa Roberson, and she was receiving calls at the newspaper from residents who saw a post on social media that Franklin Elementary had 55 new EL students there that were displaced from the hurricanes, that were in need of essential supplies like coats and clothing and that kind of thing. So she called us to verify that information. Well, as we started to try to investigate, we discovered the information was not true. I told Lisa, it's not true, you know, there's no article. Well, today, she called me back, and I actually can't believe, it's such a wonderful thing to be able to say that you have so much support and so many people that are reaching out to do good for kids. You almost hate to put the brakes on it, but we wanted to be, we wanted to be transparent, obviously, about what we know about the situation. It appears that one of our staff members from Franklin reached out to an agency related to three separate family situations at Franklin. They were not all EL students. So from there, we're not sure how it became 55 EL students in need at Franklin Elementary, but it really took off on social media. And we, Franklin Elementary, The Chronicle, agencies throughout Lurin County have been fielding calls all day today related to this. They're getting donations dropped off at agencies.[1518.94] However, when people are calling Franklin to find out what they need, the staff at Franklin is telling them, we don't have those... We haven't had an influx of 55 new students from the hurricanes.
Is there any truth to it? I mean, any number?
Well, here's...
Was there two or three?
Here's what we think. Somewhere in a conversation, somebody with information was able to say that there are about 50 students at Franklin... EL students at Franklin throughout the school. We think somehow, as social media does, and it became almost a game of telephone in that it then became 55 students who are in need of critical supplies. There's been quite a response. And so today, my conversation with Lisa on several occasions was, how do we clear this up? Because certainly don't want to discourage people from giving to the schools. And I went through a whole explanation with her, and she's well aware of this because, you know, we've worked together on this kind of stuff for years. But, you know, just this year, in the last two months, we've distributed more than, well, probably nearly 800 brand-new coats to kids in Elyria that we've received through Coats for Kids, the Elyria Fire Department, Bee's Car Stereo, just a number of places that donate. We've given out tremendous amount of supplies this year, book bags, school clothing, shoes, everything. So we need these things for kids, and we don't want to discourage that because it's such a wonderful problem to have, that you have so many people who care and want to give. But we've just been trying to clear the air within the community that it's not a specific population in a specific school right now that is in need. There is a need across the district all throughout the year. But what was happening was a lot of these agencies were then getting... People were dropping off donations and calling to make monetary donations, and Franklin and the district was saying, well, that's misinformation. And then there was some... Unfortunately, some people started to mistrust the agencies who were sharing the information. So as you can see, the power of social media, I guess. But that will be in the paper tomorrow, where we worked on it, Lisa and I did, about, you know, just making sure that people had the correct information. So if you hear about it, I guess it's still circulating. Today, I heard it was 90 kids.
These kids are supposed to be like... People come up to me. They showed up because of the hurricanes.
Yes, that's kind of the... Where it led on social media.
That's where it starts.
Yes.
That's where it started, anyway.
Right. And so there's, you know, some truth to that Franklin has received some... There have been some circumstances. Very small handful that we can trace.
That actually came from...
Yes, from circumstances related to the hurricanes.
Right. So that would be... That would be nice to have that number.
Yes. And I would say less than 10. I don't know, Ann.
We oversense the hurricane, and Denise and I have both been on emails. We've probably picked up anywhere between 10 and 20 students from Puerto Rico, straight from Puerto Rico.
Okay, so and they would be English language learning students?
Students that don't speak English go to...
That we didn't have in September.
Right. We are well over nearing about 100, close to 150 to 175 ELL learners now in Elyria. So that's well beyond what we used to have. But we, like Amy said, we do have new students, but not anywhere near what the numbers are that we're spinning around.
And we do have a process, and this is what I explained to Lisa, and again, she's well aware of how it works around here, but we have a process for when we have a need identified. And it's never usually directly from a staff member to an agency. That's rare. People were just trying to do a good thing. But typically, it's staff member to a principal, see if the building can meet the need. If not, to the communications office or the superintendent's office to then find the resources to meet that need. A lot of times, we handle it internally through our own student emergency funds that we collect through staff donations and then discretionary funds that may have been granted to the district through the superintendent's office along those lines. So we do actually have a pretty good process that works really well in most cases, but this was just one circumstance where, you know, it just kind of went a different route, so.
Yeah, hopefully, we would get the opportunity to actually explain what our process is.
Yes.
You know, take it from where it has been.
Yes.
You know.
And I think the goal of tomorrow's article is to kind of set the record straight and explain what happened.
Yeah, hopefully, we get the opportunity.
Yeah, so.
Do we anticipate that number to continue to increase or kind of...
I think we do.
Lightline a little.
Not...
It's been sprinkling in. Sprinkling, and then they leave as soon as they come and go, because if their house is up and running back at home in Puerto Rico, they may go back.
Oh, okay.
So we've had some that came, and now they've withdrawn also, so it fluctuates.
Right, and we discussed that on the phone today, too, that that number can go up and down. So just to give you a precursor to tomorrow's news, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. Dr. Jama, anything else?
That's it, Mr. President.
Board of Education, I do have a question, Doc.
Yeah.
And I appreciate your and your staff's concern in a few weeks ago when we had those closings due to the weather. Where are we at on the number of hours or the number of days? I did receive an email from a gentleman who was concerned that he was not in favor of the Blizzard Bags to make up days versus he felt it was more important for the students to be in front of a teacher. But where are we at on those days?
Absolutely, Kevin. In fact, we had a meeting today with our Teachers Association talking about this. As both bargaining units, we decided, this was about two and a half years ago, that with the hours, although the state goes by hours, we still go by days as well with the number of days teachers and staff members are contracted to work. Any day as it was in the past, any day in the amount of... Any days over five will be made up. Now, how those are going to be made up, we have not determined that yet as a district. So right now, as a district, we have one day to make up with all the schools. And then Oakwood, due to the power failure that took place earlier in the school year, they have additional two days to make up. But as we told, and I've been... I got asked this last night as well. With the weather, the way it has been, you know, I would hope that there aren't any more days, but, you know, February and March will bring that to light. But any day beyond five will be made up. How that is going to take place, it's going to happen probably in one of two ways. At the end of the school year, additional time, or adding additional time on to the